Sorry about that. Didn't mean to be quite so emphatic there.
You must have stopped by the market, got one of those five hour meetings.
Yeah, well, I figured this meeting would take five hours.
Somebody's raising the devil.
Welcome to our second budget meeting. And we've all, I think, taken a good, close look at the budget proposal. But, Mr. Gill, you want to update us? Have there been changes since the last? I imagine there have.
Yeah, we, actually, our intention is, if the board is ready to do that, to make a recommendation at the end that we approve this budget. And also, the classified indexes, and we'll go over that in a second as well. First sheet, there have been a few changes in there since our last meeting. And if you look at that, everybody has page one of three in front of them. The second column reflects this year's budget, 267 million, 102,192 dollars. And the left column is the 2012-13 draft. The final budget that year would be 200, or next year will be 281 million, 80,771 dollars. An increase of 13,978 dollars and 79 cents. Reflecting above that, that 13 million, 978, 13.9 million is comprised of the following increases. Staff, 7 million, 913,158 dollars. That includes new staff and also encompasses or includes the total raises for classified and certified for next year. And we'll talk more about that in just a second. Also, obviously, when you do those sort of things, the benefits go along with it. The benefit increase next year will be 1 million, 210,983 dollars. Medical increase, medical insurance increase, actually, we, the Commission Insurance Committee decided to pass a little more of the contribution on to the employees. So their rates will go up.
Slightly.
But even with that being done, our increase will be 3 million, 40,525 dollars. Choose a big part of that increase up. Other expenditures, 1 million, 871,861 dollars. That will be buses, utilities, any other expenditures. Equipment, there'll be a reduction of 178,216. It's not that we're cutting back in technology, but a lot of the purchases now are less expensive. They're lighter equipment, and some of that will be passed on to certain departments. And then our 120,268 dollar increase to debt service. And that's how we get to 13 million, 978,579 dollars. Any questions on that?
So that's essentially inflation and growth to cover enrollment growth, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, they would argue, I mean, I anticipate there could be some discussion about the amount of raises that are being given to teachers and classified. But the state is the one that drove that 2.077 raise. I think they mandated it.
It's mandated.
And they don't pay it off. And they, it's required. We don't have a, we don't have an opt-out on that, and we don't want to. And I think it's only appropriate that if we, that we match that with a raise for certified. And we've always done that, and, you know, they may take us on there, but I certainly hope not. But those raises, first of all, moving back up to the next line, but yeah, the answer to your question, Dr. Burns, is yes, sir. I think it's just pretty much growth in insurance.
Okay. Grant.
What's the net increase in staff numbers?
If you can wait, I'll get that in a second.
Okay.
If you hold tight, but.
Let me ask another question, kind of like, what, we have any update on our anticipated growth in new students next year?
You know, we use 2.45.
I know it's a little early, but.
No, I don't think you can do that. People move in over the summer, they move in before the.
We want it to be comfortable with 2 to 2.5 percent.
What, does anybody know off the top of their head what we picked up this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit lower. Okay. In the next line or the next column, actually, Grant, it looks like we're reflecting 68.8 positions. Now, there's a breakdown on them, and I'll give it to you in just a second. I didn't realize we reflected it there. But this year, our budget was, as I said, 267 million, 102,992 dollars. From that, that budget was comprised of 260 million, 423,270 dollars from all the different revenues, you know, county, local, and state. And also, there was a 6 million, 460,539 dollar contribution from fund balance. And we anticipate something comparable to that next year as well to make, to offset that roughly 14 million dollar increase. So that totaled 266, 266 million, 883,810 dollars. And there was another 300,000 from revenue or funds that came in here in the last month or two, Jeff, is that right?
Yes, sir. Special ed money.
Yeah. All right, next year, we anticipate the revenue being 269 million, 33,587 dollars. That could gradually increase, but not, not too terribly much, which leaves us a shortfall of about 12 million dollars to get to that 281. And that's, you know, that's where we got to use persuasion with the commission and sell them on the importance of the budget. Again, we, we know that a big chunk of it will come from fund balance. There may be some additional revenues from the county, maybe a little from the state. We don't know all those numbers, but there should be, there probably will be a need for a tax increase for us to get there, a pretty substantial one.
Wayne.
Jeff, remind me how much you pay me for.
And I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to get with Ms. Nolan and confirm that. It was maybe, does 4.50 sound about right, Mr. Burns?
4.50 is very close.
I haven't seen the new number for this year yet.
Yeah, that's very close, Mr. Blair. Okay, the next line reflects expenditures for raises. Total raises for teachers includes 1.1 million, 861,688 dollars for step raises. That's experience, change in degrees. There'll be a 2 million, 901,918 dollar need for the 2.077 percent raise that the state has mandated. So that means the total raises for certified next year will be 4.7 million. Next column reflects classified, the first one's the 34,913 dollar level raises that we're proposing that we give. The step raises will be 330,600 dollars. That'll, obviously, is based on experience and also the, you factoring the index on that? The index changed yet?
The index change is all showing in the level raises.
Okay, all right.
At this point.
And then the 2.077 percent matching rates for classified, that's 534,195 dollars. And that totaled 899,708 dollars. So we're using 5.663, almost 5.7 million dollars for raises.
Explain how, I think I know, but when the state says 2.5, and we translate that into the portion, the state portion of our salaries, other counties would have different percentages, right?
Yes, sir.
Because the state actually funds somewhat lower portion of our salaries, is that correct, depending on the county?
The salary schedule that you got at last week's meeting for teachers, there were yellow and white columns. The first column showed the state minimum required salary. The 2.5 percent is applied to that. And when you do a weighted average of our overall teaching body, it came to 2.077 percent.
Okay. Questions on this, are you done with this page, Mr. Gill?
The only, the only other information you might be interested in, the bottom portion that's in blue, you have that?
Yeah.
That just basically shows the funding for raises in the BEP allocation, what the state gives us. The state gives us 200, I mean, pardon me, 2 million, 130,199 dollars for those raises that we reflect above, and 482,343 dollars for those classified raises, 2. roughly 6 million. So in retrospect, we end up carrying.
Three million dollars in raises.
We carry the 3 million. Which, you know, if you start, you know, backtracking, you got 3 million there, you got over 3 million medical insurance, and you got stuff like other expenditures, which is needed, buses, utilities, you know, you throw about 1.5 million there, pretty soon you're up to 12 million, and you hadn't changed anything.
Right. Questions on that page or discussion? Okay.
The next two pages are, they haven't changed. And we discussed those last time. I'll be happy to go back through them if you want, or if you, I know you had this information, some of them you're going to look, or I guess all of you probably looked it over. If there are no questions on those two pages, I'll move on. If there are, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Questions on those pages?
And we did talk about last time, in particular, that first column will be adding 11 high school math teachers or chemistry teachers who has resolved American diploma project. And, you know, that's another one of those unfunded mandates that cost us 15 teaching positions, which is, gotta leave about $600,000.
I don't hear any questions on those other two pages.
Mr. Kelly, on there, I think, let me see, we're reflecting. That's, there's a reflection there of all new positions, maybe for Grant's answer his question. There'll be a total, new regular ed teachers, there'll be a total of 59.46 new positions. If you see that on the, on page two. See it at the bottom there, and those positions are reflected just above that. Those total 2 million, 309,250 dollars. And the additional benefits bring that total of 3 million, 157,834 dollars. And those include, like I say, 31.8 growth positions coupled with the math and chemistry and ESL and intervention, that brought that to 54. And the other positions are also reflected there. So we budgeted for 59.46 new teacher positions, is that right, Jeff? I think that's right.
Yes, sir.
And on the next page.
Yes, sir.
The guidance counselor, this, I guess, on the 504 issues, is that going to be a Roman guidance counselor, or is she going to work with?
Each school's trained in 504. Go ahead, Paul.
We have a student services department, and right now, there are two, they are school counselors, but they serve the entire system, and they deal with section 504, which is the program, federal program that protects students with disabilities. And right now, they're divided among the two, or between the 45 schools that we have. So this person would come in and share that load of 45 schools. And they attend all of the SAT meetings at the schools. And schools, when a, when the student is recognized as having any kind of issue with this behavior or like, and then this, what it helps related, they pull the other to the SAT team, and my student services ladies go into the schools and send those SAT teams to help them determine then what direction they need to go, whether it's 504, whether it's health-related, whether it moves to specialty, and so it's a process they go through. And then they help keep all of the 504 files coordinated so that we meet federal regulations.
Federal regulations, it's gotten so complicated that we can't take care of the school level.
And they've expanded considerably over the past two or three years. So now, we serve many, many more students than we had in the past under 504.
You know, we've done training for school principals and also counselors. I'd be the first to confess, I never was real sure when I was principal, well, who qualified for a 504 and who didn't, because it is complicated. So are they essentially the conduit for the guidance counselors with respect to?
And I'm sorry, I didn't answer your question. We do train liaison at each school to be the 504 liaison that works with our office staff. And help them coordinate within the school, and then they in turn turn around and train their staff.
So there's one at the school, and then they in turn contact.
And most of the school liaisons are school counselors. In some, in some cases, they're not. Typically, it's the school chancellor that's employed, because they have that access to all students. Yes, sir.
So on the next, on the page three of three, it reflects the new EA positions, and those are basically deal growth. Also, if you recall, we talked about school vocational secretaries, moving Carl Perkins further, we're having to pick that up because the Perkins funds been reduced. ESI clerk, you know, there's real danger in not reporting and being able to calculate student enrollments into schools. And this person will work with schools to make sure the databases are cleaned up, that, you know, that they understand software, because you could forfeit a heck of a lot of money if somebody's not working with schools and monitor that appropriately.
Well, and we noticed a $200,000 error.
Yeah.
Last week. It would be this year that would affect this year and next year funding. It's very easy to have something creep in because it's a very complex system on both ESI and STAR.
And we reflect the Stewart's Creek High School secretary custodial positions, also reflect the benefits. So the classified is 3 million, 455,000, that's not right. The total, the total staffing increases there are 3 million, 455,051 dollars.
Terry.
That back page, you got 66.58 positions?
Yes, sir. I can answer that, Mr. Gill, I just noticed that, I'm sorry. I should have updated that. The change between the evaluators, the halftime evaluators, and putting those dollars into some assistant principal positions, that's what, that's what that is, and I'll fix that in the next version.
So we're increasing 68.8?
Yeah, the 68.8 is the correct number. Sorry about that.
Are we adding assistant principals or increasing assistant principals?
Increasing. The dollars that we used for the evaluators this year, when the decision was made to do away with those for next year, we put those dollars into new, or whatever, additional assistant principal positions.
Okay.
Additional positions.
Right.
Now, is that for present schools or for Stewart's Creek?
Well, there's some schools, well, we will, obviously, we've got, some of that money goes towards part, part-time Stewart's Creek.
Right.
We also have a little money for some of the schools that are in desperate need of assistant principals. Some of them are, we really kind of falling even behind, we're getting close to falling behind SAT standards. And Mr. Oldham, Ms. Burns, and myself met this morning, we've had multiple requests for assistant principals, but obviously, we can't meet all the requests. So we try to, within the dollars that we have, we try to allocate them to where we consider their, the biggest needs are.
And smaller programs, they don't even have an assistant, do they?
No, and we're talking like, for example, Buchanan's getting up pretty close to 455, 100 people, it's probably time, they had a part-time, and he's requested it, John Dinkins has requested a part-time, Larry Creasy for years has requested one. They actually have one and a half, and then, you know, we got Segal with two, and Blackman Middle's getting up to where they're well over 1,000, and they need another part-time. So, you know, if we had our, if we had an opportunity, we probably would disseminate or send out more assistant principals than even that. I'd say, I think it's safe to say also, and Donna Pollard, I think they would agree, we also had a discussion how the role of the assistant principals changed. You know, they're no longer, at one time, they basically handled discipline. Now they're hungered down, analyzing data, helping with instruction, doing evaluations. Their responsibilities increased, more and more ball games, more and more after-school So there's really a need, probably at some point, even try to find some funding to even allocate more assistant principal, but I don't think now's the time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments? All right.
The next page reflects the index that, and also the proposed level increases. And if you recall, you missed, I think we said it totaled 34,000, didn't we, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
And we're proposing, for example, the secretary and director of instruction go from a level four to 4.5. For maintenance workers, increase their levels from five to six based on their skills. It's average about 4,096 dollars, and that puts us in, you know, more in line with a competitive market. GPS total level raises, that would bring that to 18,209 dollars. Kefteer Fund, County Clerk, level 4.5 to 5. Might also add that, did she have a master's degree?
An MBA, yes.
An MBA. Extremely competent. And down on the bottom, executive administration, administrative assistant, 2,500, and she will be topped out on the index if you pass that. Material Center Supervisor, 61 dollars, that's based on, I've known that for a while, but I forget at this time.
It just brings her in place on that index.
On the index, that's right. And then Staff Accountant, 2,000, Accounting Supervisor, Purchasing Agent, Director of Maintenance, I don't think anybody questioned, you know, the number of folks back there have increased, the number of employees increased, responsibilities increased. Maintenance Formant with 29 years' experience, 2143, it tops him out, and I think the index that kind of brings him into compliance with his index.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And Transportation Supervisor, 2,000, that would top him out on the index. That's the other 16,704 dollars. Also, our Kefteer Director's done a tremendous job, we're very fortunate to have him. Hate to lose him, and I don't, I mean, he hadn't threatened to do that, I think he's very loyal to the district, but he's making, even at 4,200, I think he'll make less than what Ms. Cooper made eight or 10 years ago. And I think we need to do that, just to be fair.
Tim.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what the term topped out means, so just explain that real briefly.
And what it means is that, I mean, they would continue to get any kind of, like, for example, if we decided to give a 2 percent increase next year, that'd be fine, but they will have topped out with respect to what the index allows. Or if somebody goes in there and decides they want to give the Director of Maintenance another 4 or 5,000 dollars, they wouldn't be prohibited from doing that, but the index is set in place that they wouldn't get an increase unless the board just, or the superintendent just brought it to the board to pay them additional money. Did I explain that right? I hope so, I think so.
Yeah. That's what I thought it was, I just wanted to be sure.
Are they already topped out, or are you going to top them out?
This will top them out.
If they, if you adopt this index.
And those raises that we have recommended.
Yeah, these raises will. So what kind of discussion do we need on the index? It's right smack there in the center of the page.
So these positions were not on an index, is that right? And we're putting an index on it?
A couple of them were on indexes that basically had become obsolete. They were set in the early 90s and had never been changed. As we started hiring with Mr. Watson, people outside the school system who had experience, they just were not adequate.
Aaron.
What was the nature of the old index?
It, it varied, it was on one of those sheets that I gave you last week. It, it varied. There were, there was a, there was a level five department head or supervisor, there was a level six, there was a maintenance, just, it varied and had kind of become obsolete because raises had been given, recognizing that it was obsolete. And that those people were not being reasonably compensated.
Grant.
Do you have a history on everyone's raise, and there was everyone's?
Yes, sir.
Well, do you look at, how far back do you go, look at those? I mean, they may have gotten some suspicion.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, in, in looking at this index and those changes, I've looked at where they were now relative to the experience that had been recognized when they were hired. Trying to make an estimate of the comparability of their responsibilities.
So is that to say that this is not necessarily years of experience with Rutherford County schools, but years of experience in their trade?
That were recognized as, they were given experience when they came in.
Yeah, if somebody comes in, for example, if they've been in the business world, they've done a job comparable for 17 years, then we, we recognize that as previous experience. Really, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, okay, if, when I came here, I was given 20 years' experience. That's how long I've been working in a county.
Right.
You know, if I hadn't been given that experience.
You hadn't come.
I probably wouldn't have come, absolutely.
I think that's reasonable.
Well, same thing with electrician or HVAC.
Right, right.
If you don't recognize their expertise, they're not going to come to work.
Right.
Well, here is where I look at this, is these people doing a good job, but we messed up because they had an index. But we gave them raises at various points.
Right.
That did not meet the index.
Right.
So therefore, some of this is our fault. So if we put an index in like what we're shown here, you know, that's well and good only if we stick with it.
Correct.
And you know, that's, and that they step increases and those kinds of things, they fall in the same category. You know, all of a sudden, you can give someone a pretty doggone good raise, and it not, it not show up necessarily, you've got a step, and then you, you've got the index, and then all of a sudden, those raises are pretty hefty.
Well, and since I have been here with Mr. Gill and Mr. Watson, we have been very careful to let the board know in the budget process.
Well, I'm not.
Well, I mean, we, we just have because we did not, and I don't think any of you were on the board when this happened. We, some years back, there were some, there was a lot of discussion, well, had unauthorized raises been given. And I went back to the early and mid 90s as the salary schedules evolved and showed, it took me like three days, but showing, okay, it was here, there was this raise, that took it to there, two years later, what happened, and just reconstructed that history for the board. So we're very careful to notify y'all.
I'm not insinuating anything.
No, I know you weren't, no, but just that question, when it came up before.
Just the fact that we do need an index. And it needs to be fair to, fair to these people who are employed, but, you know, I'm going, if we're going to vote one in, we need to be as more diligent and follow it. And we need to, I'll say, we need to do our homework a little better to be sure that we're not breaking our own index on this. So if this is the index that brings these people in line, then, you know, I would certainly be for that, but I wouldn't want the index to change in a year or two.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And when you say outdated index, that, I didn't understand that terminology.
One of, the, one of the positions, the one that got sixty-one dollar raise, that index, the, the pay associated with that index was so low that this salary person could have made less than some of our hourly clerical staff. Yeah.
So they actually have a better index?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, as hourly pay rates have gone up, because we've had some raises that both hourly and salary have gotten, but the indexes for some of these positions have been much better for the hourly staff. So I have people in my office, hourly, who are approaching some of my salary folks. And I expect my salary folks to work over as needed, no overtime, so some equity there.
I have misinterpreted some of our raises. I was under the impression that if a person was classified at whatever position they were in, if we gave a two and a half percent raise, then everyone got it.
Yes, but when you throw in the hourly salary schedule index, so, when you, after you go in five, ten years, some of those increases, that's where the inequities were developing. They, they, the index for the hourly folks tended to be more generous than some of the indexes for the salary folks, for the folks who had an index.
And this kind of remedies that situation.
Yes, sir.
Wayne?
Describe for me, for my education, as far as the classified and the certified. I know we have, now we have the index.
Right.
And, uh, and then we have leveling, we have level increases and step increases. Kind of paint me a picture, if you will, other than a state raise or a bonus. How do they increase on certified level?
Okay.
And how do they increase on the?
A certified person, from his or her beginning year up through year thirty on our schedule, and some of the years, it's pretty small raises. But each additional year, you will have some step raise. And many years, if there's a percentage raise, that percent will get applied to the whole table. So you've got your step increase for a certified person. For a certified person, your new degree is your level increase, or if you become an administrator, and are put on one of those indexes. For a classified person, you've got your cost of living, whatever that is, and then, uh, in, say, at the end of your fourth year, and this is just, I don't have one in front of me, I'm sorry. At the end of the, your fourth year, if you're in the, the, the level increase also ties to your index, it's another way of referring to it. So at, at the beginning of your fifth year, you would get your level increase plus whatever cost of living increase there was, if any, that year. So it's, it's similar, but for, it's, it's, it's similar, but.
If they're hired in with the experience, they're already at.
Right.
At an index, and.
Right.
Go clearer for me now.
What is the initial source of your index? On each job?
Okay. Years of experience that are accepted, I would say is the initial source for a classified person. For a certified person, it's, it's your years of experience and your degree that are drawn, that are, that are approved by the state.
But, oh, that's, that's where I'm coming from, the state has a, has a, they have a top, or they have a?
No, no, they do not have a top, but we had a teacher transferred in from a private school who had been there thirty years. The state, after about a year and a half, ruled that his experience was not acceptable. Even though he'd been, he had not, uh, we, we had a private school person in the last few months. It turns out, had never been a licensed teacher. That is not acceptable experience if he or she did not have a valid teaching license in his or her previous position. The state won't count that.
But it varies on, on each position, then, because you've got, who has the oversight on, on that? State review those?
That is, in a state of flux, the state eliminated the position in April that made those decisions on private school experience. We don't know where we are on that.
But his, I mean, the protocol's been that the employee, Paula?
Yes, sir.
Employee submits to the state their experience schedule, and we verify that they have that number of years' experience, and the state confirms it.
That is correct.
Yeah. And that's how we arrive at, at, at their experience level. Very few times do we have any discretion in that at all.
No.
I mean, when it comes to classified now, you know, some, I mean, there's got to be someone make a call, somebody comes in here, they've had seventeen years, and, you know, I guess you, you could negotiate that down or something like that, but we always try to be fair with respect to awarding experience, you know, based on.
We do, for classified people, we require documentation.
Absolutely.
From previous employers.
Absolutely.
Before we agree to accept any experience.
I was going to say that, but you didn't give me time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gill.
But you did good, Jeff.
Since, since Ms. Nichols and I take care of those, I didn't know if you even knew we did that.
Well, I knew you did that.
One quick part on that, if you have a, a hourly employee, and for whatever reason, either he's real good or we're real short on folks, he has to work a lot of overtime, now how does that affect his next year's?
It doesn't. Overtime does not for an hourly person. We're paying the overtime.
Well, yeah, I'm saying that.
But it doesn't, it has no impact on their pay the next year. No.
But overtime's few and far between, you know?
Right.
Unless it's some kind of crisis, typically it's maintenance.
Well, I'm saying that, but I mean, sometimes you have, sometimes.
Uh, Terry?
Based, uh, based on these increases you've got listed here, uh, I guess you, you were sure with every employee we've got, you've looked at theirs?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh?
Yes, sir.
Whatever we get, okay. Uh, next question, is this something you're going to see again next year?
In the future, if, if y'all approve this index, it would be like the other step raises that flow through the budget. If an employee is due that, I would just build it into the next year's budget. But it, there, it will follow that index, it won't vary from that index. Uh, the.
That's good.
Yeah, okay.
Simply put, it's, it's years of experience and years of, in time with us. Is that basically it?
Yeah, not totally, no, yeah.
Experience that was approved when you started, plus what you've worked with us.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, isn't it, it's essentially equivalent to a step raise, I mean, it's the same idea, you're paying people with more experience. It, the terminology is confusing, because we call it one thing for certified and one for classified, but it's the same idea.
Yeah, that's not oversimplifying, that's exactly what it is.
Aaron?
If I'm reading correctly, the, the, I'm looking at the yellow and white that he handed out last week. Um, and it says that years of experience could top out in classified salary at one point four. At fourteen plus, the index for level five, at one point three.
Yes, that old index, right.
Right, the old index. Now we're going to cap it at one hundred thirty.
Right.
Essentially one point three. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Is there anyone that is going to be frozen, waiting for the steps to catch up with them, because they're sitting at one point three five?
No, sir. Because we have, in the past fourteen years, those people who were on those two indexes have been given other raises above and beyond their index.
Other raises?
Yeah.
Based on merit?
Yeah, basically merit. Or responsibilities, yeah.
Is there a problem with merit raises or responsibility raises as opposed to step raises?
I mean, I'd like to think if people weren't efficient in their job, they wouldn't continue on, on the payroll. They're, they're, they were annual employees, now they're at-will employees. I mean, obviously, they're all working within departments, and people monitor their, their performance. And I don't know how you decipher, you know, between the two, I mean, there have been occasions, we did a classified payroll study a couple, three years ago. And basically what it revealed was our people were, in almost every case, underpaid. Uh, some more so than others, and that's part of the reason we've tried to, you know, I think, I hope I mastered your question. Part of the reason we've had a pile of list people, we're trying to get their salaries up a little bit. For example, in Jeff's department, we lost two or three people to county general, how many, three?
Three, and three others.
Considered.
Considered.
Yeah. And it was because they paid more for the same positions at county general than we pay here. And, uh, we have a lot of discussions, and matter of fact, I, I typically end them up with, is that what county general does with respect to insurance contributions, uh, salaries, and other things? So we have to work, work within that framework.
County general, though, those, a lot of those employees are subject to who gets put in, back into office, the head, is that true?
Not, not, not their, not their, I guess, are they referred to as classified, now they wouldn't be, but.
They, they don't make any distinction.
Yeah.
Obviously, uh, the road superintendent by election, he, I think he's getting rid of the majority of the, of the, at least upper level employees out there. That's what, what's been told, and it has happened since many times, but, I'm saying, it seems like, uh, that some of them have protection, some not have any, so.
Well, I mean, we got, um, yeah, well, I mean, we got the authority, superintendent does, to do the very, that very thing, but I personally, you know, don't like.
Well, I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just saying, other ones do, do do it, that, that may be some different.
Well, I'm not sure, that's a real smart thing to go, go in there and just run people off, I'd rather find a way to make them better.
Well, Mr. Odom might come in and clean house, we don't know.
I suspect he won't.
He doesn't seem like the type.
I think he's got a little more sense than that. There's a reason we're one of the most effective districts in the state, that's because of our good employees in it, Doc.
You know, this, this, the comment that we're losing workers to the county general, but, but we're not losing workers to the private. Because all of a sudden, we've got a pretty good insurance package.
Right.
We've got several things. And it's my understanding, when a job is posted for a bookkeeper's job in a school, or a secretary's job, that we have an ample number of applicants.
Now, sometimes for the accounting jobs, they're not overly qualified, as far as having experience. We have found some great folks with aptitude, but, yeah. I, I, I had seventy-two applicants, four to six of them had a background that they were worth interviewing.
I, I, I bet, Mr. Gill, I can, I know I can remember when you had a secretary's job at a school. You had to go out and look for one instead of having applicants.
Yeah.
So times have changed.
Yes.
And all of a sudden, and I'm, I'm not talking about the index, I'm just talking about, we have a pretty good salary schedule for teachers, undoubtedly, because when you have a job there, they just show up from all over the world. By hundreds. And when we have a job posting, we have a considerable number of applicants. And even if only six out of sixty are qualified, you know, we used to, only, we could get three applicants, we were, we were very fortunate, and interview three.
Well, I'm not sure that's because we pay them so great, a lot of them apply because they like the nine or ten month work.
Yes.
They want to be home with their kids in the summer. Plus, we didn't have a hundred applicants when I started, when the economy were good, and we still had a few. But it wouldn't look like you had a hundred, now we're at the point where we got to decide, do we have to interview all these a hundred people, or how do we whittle it down? But it is an attractive job to those kinds of folks who want the summers off and have, you know, children in the school system, uh. And I know you're not, you're not questioning whether we pay them too much, I, I, everybody that works at a secretary or a bookkeeper in a school earns their money. We know that. And a EA, too.
I never felt like any of them left school that stayed there, that didn't earn their money.
Didn't have a brakes truck rating on them.
Aaron?
If we were to not adopt this new, uh, step index, would we revert back to one that's not working right now? Or would there not be a step index?
There really would be.
I'm sorry, there really would not be. And yet there is one that's on the books, we're just kind of choosing to ignore it right now.
Well, we, we have had this group of salary classified people who did not fit the indexes that were in place in nineteen ninety-eight. Again, because we started hiring primarily, well, uh, in, in the accounting department, I have three staff members on that list. All three of them came with outside experience in purchasing or accounting. If we had not done something to recognize that experience, I'm not sure we could have kept them. And we, we have, you know, that's, that's part of the ju, uh, judgment. I know some of the people that Mr. Gill has hired, if he had only been able to hire based on what was on that index from the nineteen nineties, he wouldn't have been able to get some of the people he brought in. They were just out of line, market wise, like Mr. Donald said. You know, it's something that should have been done earlier, and just, this is an attempt to fix that situation.
So am I understanding, then, that the challenge and what we're trying to correct is that we have employees that maybe were hired at a higher level, and they've been, I'm sorry.
In line with the budget. In line with the budget for that position.
In line with the budget, true. But because of that, now their pay has become a little bit stagnant, and we have no way to increase them. And this is an acceptable way to systematically give them.
Right. Aaron, were you finished?
With that exchange, I am.
Okay, you want to keep going now, or you want me to come back?
Well, I don't know, what, what's, what is the resolution for tonight? I mean, do we leave this meeting and say, we like this, or we not? I know we're heading toward a joint health and ed meeting. Uh, I, I understand it better now because of, of what Mr. Sambig has, has explained, and I appreciate that greatly.
My hope is we leave with a recommendation for a budget. This is an important discussion, but I don't want us to get sidetracked over thirty-five thousand dollars in a two-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollar budget. I mean, we need to keep that in perspective. Tim?
Go back to the, the question that Terry asked, and I just want to make sure to answer. This, uh, eight or nine lines at the very bottom, I think the question was, is this something we're going to see this year and not likely to see again?
Correct. Question I wanted to ask.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I forgot you, Terry.
I'm just, I'll just make a couple of comments, uh, in regards to your thirty-five thousand...
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we're being fair.
Right. No, we all...
That's my main thing, but, uh, correctly, again, or not correctly, just, on this years to experience, what you're telling me, if you hire somebody that's worked at four different places for twenty years, you're going to bring them in here and give them twenty years worth of experience?
Yes, sir. If, if it is comparable...
If it's applicable to the job and it's comparable to what they do here, yes. Everyone that's applied down here, we didn't award them a full, I mean, there were years that we didn't think it was pertinent to what they'd be doing, and they were whittled down. And there is some judgment down here with respect to, you know, their experience level, but, you know, it's documented, and I don't know any other, other way to do it.
I just, I just, that's moving to me, but I just want to make sure we're doing it for everything, but...
Well, that's a good question, and I'm not sure that's been answered explicitly. There won't be anybody left in this category who doesn't have an index if we adopt this.
No, no.
Is that what you're getting at, Terry? I mean, that's a good question to ask.
All of our, the salary schedule for salary classified people, there's a technology section on it, which the board approved around ninety-five, ninety-six. That one still works. It's a very, it's a very generous index. We are having good luck bringing people in for that one. And I think, my recollection is, without looking at it, that everyone else on that schedule will now, any, anyone else on that schedule and the people who don't have an index will be covered by this new index.
So, this, this new index is not going to hurt anybody?
No, sir. No.
And I think I heard you just say that all classified now are indexed.
Right, with this.
Yes. And I guess that's where I'm pausing, is that philosophically, the board will make a decision to say that all staff will have some type of index, as opposed to, we've identified an area here where we have established, both in recruiting and in retention, that merit raises or merit-based pay was an appropriate way to recruit and retain those individuals. It could be an indicator for the board to move away from index pay and move toward merit, retention, and recruitment. And as we move toward, nope, we're going to complete the puzzle with index, it's really kind of a phil- philosophical thing, decision for me, that, that I say, okay, we're going to be an indexed system, that the longer you stay, or the longer that you're a part of this, the higher your pay will be, or the longer you've been in a position, or the longer you're recognized to have been in an applicable position, then your pay will adjust accordingly. For me, that's the thing, it's, it's not just these fifteen people, it's really that philosophical kind of thing. We've got the choice here, we can complete the puzzle and be an indexed pay scale, or we can take an intentional step in another direction and be a pay system that goes toward merit and performance.
And you're talking about for classified?
Uh, I think, yeah, I'm definitely talking about for classified, but I think, you know, it, it's something that we hear about in certified, as we talk about merit-based pay and certified employees and such. And I'm not necessarily advocating for either direction, I'm just taking note of the implication that by completing this puzzle, we say, everybody's indexed, and, uh, and it kind of moves us in a, in a, in a, in a mindset. I'm just taking note of that, not necessarily arguing one side or the other.
Well, I would defend doing this by saying, you've got people that have been loyal to the system for many, many, many years, and everybody's evaluated, it's classified, and people have the right, if, if, if folks aren't doing, uh, uh, doing a, a good job in what they're assigned to do, not to renew that person, uh, because, as I say, they are now at-will employees. I mean, it's, it's, I think people, as they do their job, aspire, you know, realize, hey, two, three years out, if I do a good job, there's this, you know, step increase, there's an additional raise waiting for me. I don't know how you could do that, but now, we've got classified, like Mike Snell's classified, uh, Mr. Clardy's classified, uh, you're classified. I mean, like, for example, say Gary Left or, or Jeff, and we had somebody out there that, that, uh, applied for the job and had, had exceptional skill. I mean, we, we're not limited with respect to what we start that person out. So, in retrospect, there's probably some merit pay there, but once they're on board, they're on some kind of consistent index that would recognize their, you know...
I think, though, Aaron is talking about the same, uh, taking the, the amount of money that would go into an annual across-the-board raise, and instead of doing it like that, divvying it up according to performance, is that what you're saying, Aaron?
I, I am. The people at the top of the page that are receiving, uh, you know, the, the level increases, you know, those are for outstanding performance. I think one of the arguments that we hear, I'm not saying it's necessarily present here in our system, but one of the arguments that we hear about certified or classified staff is simply having years in service of acceptable work does not necessarily equate to a meritorious pay increase. And it's one of the challenges that sometimes we face is that an employee might be stagnant in their performance and is completely adequate, and yet, because of years of service, are receiving an increase for not exemplary performance, but adequate performance. And is that the direction we want to go? I'm okay with it, it might be the direction we want to go, but I at least want to raise it to the board's attention that embedded in this decision is, is that kind of implication.
Except, I think we're already ninety-nine percent of the way toward what you're saying is the non-merit pay system. I, you know, I agree that theoretically, a merit pay system is, is probably good. The reality of it is achieving that, I don't think we'd have a manager left in the system because the, the bloodletting that would occur... I mean, at MTSU, we often, we have the same discussion, what's the best way to, to compensate people? And the one year that we had a little bit of merit pay, morale went through the floor because, you know, people, oh, well, why'd they get merit pay and I didn't? And they were squabbling over, you know, peanuts, really, is how much was devoted to it. So, it's probably, it, it probably is a good discussion to have, the, how you make it work in a, in a system as big as this one and as complicated as this one, I, I don't know.
May- maybe the safety, security, and what you can count on in the, in the index sys- system is really our most attractive characteristic.
It's, it's certainly one of the benefits of government employment, is the security and the stability of it.
Good pick.
I believe we have two protections here. I think we have one, through, they're all at-will, so...
Right.
You have to perform, and they're all being evaluated each year. So, I, I think the system is protected by, specifically by those two issues, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, with, with doing the, the index.
Donald.
I have a question in mind. If this index is for classified staff salary, why wouldn't we put it in as an index for salaried employees? What was your thinking? Because we have a s- index, if you're a high school principal, you know what you're on, what your index is. And it's categorized all the way down. But the principals know if they move to this side school, it's going to be six or seven. But that's the principal's index. But a classified index, it sounds to me like, and when I looked at the paper, it's kind of all over the board. Is that, am I being too general there, or...
Well, I, I think that starting pay for this particular index, that starting pay, because you have a whole range of positions, everyone from just below the assistant superintendent's to, uh, the material center supervisor, and our coordinated school health person at the lower end. So, where, where, when the director of school hires someone, the relative responsibility of the position will drive the starting pay.
Right.
And then, the years of experience that are approved would place that person, here you are on the index to govern.
Thirty percent of a hundred thousand dollars is thirty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Over a twenty-five-year period. Yeah.
But that's not counting the two and a half percent and the three percent, and all of that, that comes along every year.
But...
And then, the, the ten dollar an hour person at, at the school, and, uh, you know...
Thirty-seven percent index over the same period.
Well, I, that's, that's right. And that's what I'm saying.
Oh.
What makes it, what makes us need to have, if they're classified, what makes us need to have a different index?
We, we've had several indexes for classified, and I was trying to come up with something consistent for this small group of people.
I, I, I understand that, and, and I'm not disagreeing with that. My question is, for this small group, but we've got two thousand classified, wouldn't it be simpler if every one of them had the same index?
Well, I was also looking at the monetary impact and trying to come up with something that had minimal cost to start. And when, when we look at that, if, when we look at, if we looked at trying to true-up the index for all classified people and looking at the higher end that we have on some of those positions, it would cost money. More money, yeah.
Well, I think we need to decide if we're, if we're ready to do this or not, and, and we might not be, and I'm okay with that, and we'll study it and come back. But the main order of business tonight is to get this budget proposal approved. So, I certainly don't want to cut off conversation, but let's don't forget the main goal here tonight. Now, if we don't reach that, that's fine, we can come back and meet again, but, but that's really what we're trying to do. So, I think what we need to think about now is, can we live with this in this budget, or do we need to pull it out and study it some more? I mean, I think, and that's what I think, I could be wrong.
From my point of view, I'd like to pull it out and study it some more, not to be against it, uh, because I'm for the index, but I'd like to just, I'd like to have the idea of some figures of what it would take for the whole group, and you might already have it.
I, I do not.
But I, I just, uh, what we're doing, in my mind, we're putting central office staff classified on one's index, and the people out in the schools on another index. Is that right or wrong?
Probably somewhat right, but who's salary out in the schools?
And no one's salary out.
They're all hourly employees.
That, that's right.
And see, what we're trying to fix an index for is salaried employees, uh, and is because the hourly employees already have a index.
Okay, I thought I knew where we were, but now I don't think I know. Grant?
My background is in private industry. And I was not at the bottom, and not, not quite at the top, but when there were bad years, not necessarily because of the company's performance, but because of economy in general, then sometimes that affected what any of us got. And sometimes, the, the upper echelon didn't get any, because obviously, uh, there, there were some, made some factors that pointed towards some decisions they made that, that did affect that. But the, I, I understand that you have to retain people, and it's, and true for, for private industry, too, but you need to, people need to understand at some point in time, if, if your source of revenue is somewhat driven by the economy, and it is here, I mean, you know, taxes and, and, and what comes out on the houses being built, and people moving in, so on and so forth, industry. But sometimes, when it's a, it's a downturn or a level, things are just not as open. Of course, this is what, of course, I've been in the county commission, and obviously, that's what they look at, and, uh, that's, that's part of the thing. Now, of course, obviously, we get money from the state, and some of the sources of those, it's very convoluted, but, but you, you can't just arbitrarily just say, you're going to get a raise every year, a substantial raise, just because, because you're here and working.
Well, that's right, you're doing an index, so it won't be arbitrary. You're setting up a schedule by which they would be compensated at a certain point.
But then you tie in some other, uh, things that, that, that affect it, too, so I, I don't know. But I've been saying that in private industry, they understand it, and sometimes, individual hard workers get the kind of...
Well, there are a lot of years that we haven't given raises because of that very issue. I mean, I, I don't, I don't really understand your argument.
We have a, we have a, so, this would give us a s- salary classified index. We already have an hourly classified index. We have a administrator's index.
For certified.
Right, right, sorry, for certified, excuse me. So, principals, they have an index, and then, uh, the coaches have an index, is that right?
That's, wouldn't be an index, it's just a...
Uh, supplemental, okay, okay. Well...
Of course, all that was negotiated, yeah, that was all negotiated.
Our medical staff has an index.
And they're all different, right?
Yeah, they're all different.
And there's probably no way to make them all the same.
It would take money to make them all the same.
Donald, are you, are you asking the question that the, the hourly classified index is different than this proposed salary classified index? Is that what you're saying? And, and the answer to that question was, yes, it would be different, okay. But to make them the same would cost some untold amount of money?
I, I don't, I could try to come up with something.
My, my experience is when, with indexes or salary schedule, thinking in terms of the coaches and, and those supplements, I know those are there, it's almost, well, I think it's always a situation where if you do something, you've got to raise the bottom up as opposed to bringing the bottom down, or the top down, to make that happen. And I think what I hear you saying is if we took that and, and spread it completely across to even, to people in your position, it would cost the system a, 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 a lot of money if, if we took that index all the way up to that level.
Yes, sir. But I, I, I don't know, I attempt to quantify that.
Okay, so what do we want to do?
Well, if you delay doing anything on the index, what's that do to the next year's budget?
It does not impact next year's budget.
So, in retrospect, you got time to go back and start?
Yeah, you know, uh, it's one of those things, I have the concern if we don't do something on it in this budget process...
When will we do it?
It'll wind up being next year's budget process. Just, that's the way things tend to work.
So, it's just that it, the actual index numbers are different for the, for the hourly folks than they would be? Why couldn't you use that same index here? Would that not produce the result that you think you need, or...
The hourly index varies depending on the level.
It, it, that's what, that's what's so confusing.
Yeah, yes, and that's what you're saying, this year, and again, yeah.
It varies for one group and all over the place.
Well, I mean, in connection with Dr. Burr's question, I mean, is there, Jeff, a one-size-fits-all rule for classified employees?
Okay, because of the way the technology salary's schedule was set, because I, I looked at trying to include them, too. For that group, the board approval specifically said only, rather... For that group, the board approval specifically said only Rutherford County Schools' experience as a technology, computer technology guy will count or lady. So it specifically says that. So it is a very generous index, but it takes, it does give no credit for prior experience. So that is the one that we would really be messed up on if we tried to change it to recognize experience. That's, that's, that's the one that was totally out of joint because of the way it was approved.
Mr. Sandvig, you've had new people come into your office and your staff. Are there substantial software obstacles and, and hurdles? Or is that, do you find that that experience outside of our school system is very valuable?
Payroll experience is very valuable if you're getting a payroll clerk. Accounts payable if you're getting an AP clerk.
Okay.
Absolutely. Now, with it, with us being governmental, there are some differences, but most of it is the same.
Okay.
As, as far as down at that level.
Well, you know, it comes down to, I didn't fully understand what Terry was saying earlier, but it comes down to a fairness issue and I think that's what both he and Donald are saying. But it also comes down to a monetary issue. And Harry just said, well, can we totally reinvent our system here tonight? And I don't think we can. So, uh, on the other hand, it, this appears to be needed and I hate to do nothing. So I, I don't quite know what to.
Well, the other hand of it is that you have, then the county commission you have to deal with to.
We're gonna have to have a better explanation than, than we've had.
Well, typically though, I mean, I mean, I guess, you mean with those raises, what they're gonna have to deal with?
I'm, I'm sure so.
Well, I mean, it.
Good recall.
I mean, I've been, well, I know when I've talked to someone too, it's not my first rodeo, I've been doing this nine times. I think we'll probably be okay with thirty-four thousand dollar raise. But, uh, if, if in fact, it's not, I mean, can we give these folks this raise and put the index over here and, and maybe create, form a committee to study that?
We could.
To study that and, and at some point, you know, maybe put a couple of board members on it, maybe Ms. Barnes, maybe do some comparisons with respect to what other districts do, like we've done in the past, and put something together that's, uh, you know, may wind up doing what you're doing now. But you may find a better way to do it.
And I can try to quantify if I need one classified index, what that would cost. But I can't put the technology folks on it.
Right, but, but whatever you do, I mean, if you make a change in the index, it could have a dramatic monetary effect.
Yes, it could, because it would be all costs.
We gotta be cautious of that, because like Grant said, you know, we don't wanna go down there and say, hey, we've changed our index, it resulted in a four million dollar increase in the case, and that's not gonna work.
Yeah.
I think, given all the conversation, unless somebody's read a vote on it, I, I would recommend you just do a study on it.
Uh, I got two folks, Aaron first and then Terry.
I think it's curious, again, as we talk about this, that the technology people, that not only is it that they have a specific index, but the rules of their index are unique, that they don't count, uh, past years of experience in the industry, but only experience in our system. You know, it, it, it's once again an indication that the specific job and the specific performance in that job and the characteristics of that profession, where there is a lot of jumping from position to position, you know, um, you know, to be able to incentivize them to stay here with us was the goal and, uh, and, you know, what we, what we designed that, that pay structure to work. Uh, just take a note of that, it's very interesting.
Terry?
I don't know, I don't know how you go, you know, I don't have a problem leaving it in the budget, but, I'd rather see this committee and all that stuff formed and make sure everything's being done the right way. I don't know how you, you know, I'm in favor of leaving it in there, but I'd rather have it looked at a little bit.
You talking about these salary increases?
They're these right here. I don't, I don't have a problem putting thirty-four nine and leaving it in the budget. And, you know, checks out.
Well, is there one in particular that you're interested in?
No, no, I'm just, I want, I might say is make sure everything's done on the, done right.
Just reminding us, we have that joint meeting on the twenty-second, is that correct? So it's, that's a four weeks? Not quite four weeks, so that, that's coming up, so.
Don?
Well, I, I don't want to not have an index for retrospect, because I, I really believe that's a step in the right direction. So we could go ahead and approve this and then still form the committees and, and, and see what we could do later.
You're talking about with respect to the index?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, and, and if, if nothing, nothing came out of the committees, you know, you still have an index for the people to work with.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Jernigan makes a good point, because the discussion is the, how valuable the index is and that, that idea that in our system, there are things you can count on and the security and the safety of the, of the pay structure in Rutherford County Schools. So I think I would be on the same track that while a goal may come from this discussion of streamlining those indexes, you know, on a, on a long-term perspective, you know, into, into one common index or finding efficiencies or continuity in those indexes, that that would be a goal for years to come from this discussion. I, I think maybe the appropriate measure tonight is to approve it as presented.
Terry?
Basically what you're doing, you're approving these raises. If you might have a committee down the road, you're not approving the index.
Well, the. The raises are really separate from the index.
Well, I know, we have two different discussions going here, yes.
Well, I think, I think the discussion is that I would probably be in favor of approving this index structure at this time. But at the same time, resulting from this discussion, pursuing a, a, a study that would allow us to evaluate that index again in the future. We're gonna have a hard time defending, um, all of these, I say we have, y'all know better than I do. It's not for me to say whether or not we can defend all of these as meritorious raises. But if we go to Health and Ed and say we've got thirty-four thousand of, of meritorious raises, then that's a different discussion than to say that we have eighteen thousand of meritorious raises and we have sixteen thousand of tenure of service raises. That divides these two into bite-sized pieces that Health and Ed and the county commission can chew on a little easier.
Wayne?
As we do this committee study, can we, since Jeff opened the, the door to county general, can we do a comparison with, with theirs, no?
They changed their salary schedule and increased it several years ago and it is on a totally different basis than ours.
But do they do, do they do indexes like we do, I mean?
Nothing, it is totally different.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I attempted to do that one year. Okay.
Tim?
I propose that we, uh, accept the numbers that are here. Table the, uh, index numbers until we have the opportunity to go through and approve the index at a later meeting.
Okay. I, I think that's what Terry said too.
I'll, I'll take it.
Okay, we'll take that as a motion.
I am with me.
It was intended for one word.
Now, are you approving the budget, is that what?
Well, no, I mean, we're getting a little bit out of, I think, we're, we're, let's just go ahead and approve this.
Those salaries are in the budget, those salary increases. So in retrospect.
Maybe we should get a motion on the entire budget.
We're basically, Grant believes in them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But table the index.
Yeah.
Table the index.
Yeah, yes.
Right. Well, let's go ahead and vote on that and then we'll vote on the entire budget. So the motion is approve the salaries, but table the index and, and form a committee to study this index question, yeah. Well, I don't know, what's the scope of the committee? Does it study the whole shebang? I guess it is.
All indexes.
Can't really study part of it without studying the rest of it.
You at least make a comparative analysis, I don't wanna study, we're not, but we're gonna.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, motion's adopted. Now, Mr. Gill, we got a little bit sidetracked there, but other comments on the budget, generally speaking? Or, and then I'll ask for questions on the other parts of the budget. Do you have anything else you need to say, uh?
No.
Well, no, sorry, how about that? That's a little more.
Felt like me banging the gavel. You had some of that five-hour stuff yourself.
It didn't come out with a compassion I intended it to.
All right, questions on the, any other questions on the budget, Wayne?
I just had, uh, pointed out some, uh, some increases to, to Mr. Sandvig prior to the beginning of the meeting and were you planning on kind of addressing those?
If y'all would like. Do you want me to do that, Mr. Gill, or would you like?
Hang on.
Wayne is asking, so let's, uh, do you wanna specify what those are so that?
Well, I just, I.
Or Jeff has them all?
I have.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeff, I mean, I have what you do.
Uh, well, one of the questions was if we increase high school assistant principals ten days and middle school assistants five days, what would that cost to be? One hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. In the personnel contracted services, seventy-two, three-twenty, three-ninety-nine, I think page nineteen, other contracted services has a three hundred and fifty-eight percent increase. The search soft, our annual maintenance fees that have been paid by Title II, we have to move to the GPS budget. And Ms. Barnes has also requested a teacher evaluation application. It would be about seven hundred dollars per school. It should be ready. In the other student services page, page eight of thirty-one, there are, there are, there are shifts between three oh nine, government services from other governments and three ninety-nine contract services. The ser, that depends on who pay, who we pay. It's SROs, the athletic trainers, our ambulance charges and our security charges. So there are, there is some net increase there, mostly because of the security charges and the athletic trainer charges are going up a bit. The other question, or the, the main other question, uh, in, on page twenty-three, which is sent, other, central and other, the technology, part of the technology budget is there. Part of it is on page one. And as the requisitions come, I look and see where they should be coded. I'm moving money around in the technology budget. I'm not increasing or decreasing it, except for every two years, we have fifty thousand dollars for our antivirus software. We didn't have to pay it last year, it's a two-year subscription, we've gotta pay it this year. And in, on the first page, other charges, item five ninety-nine, there's a thirty-four percent increase. We're going to need to buy a third school activity bus. And we also have some state grants that hit in that line. I, I think those were your questions, Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Yeah, Wayne, are you done? You satisfied, okay, Terry?
First question I've got is on these subs.
Mm-hmm.
Why, why were you increasing subs so much?
Okay.
What we're doing on that is it's, it's not that we're increasing it much, I think there's a net increase. I mean, there's an increase of thirty-five thousand dollars. What it is, we pay people that are degree and certify more than we do somebody that doesn't. So we're just shifting, uh, the amount of dollars from line A to line B. But the net increase is a thirty-five thousand dollar increase for the year. But it's, it's, uh, somewhat confusing.
For, what about special ed, does that hold completely different?
Substitutes in special ed?
Yeah.
It was spread, that, that item is spread throughout the budget. So in total, it's about a two hundred thousand dollar increase. Thirty-five thousand in the regular instruction department. The vocational subs have gone up and.
Yeah, that's six, that's sixty-nine thousand, and then you get over to vocational ed, you got another ninety-four thousand.
Right, and I will be bringing forward amendments in May, adjusting current year expenditures to be more in line with what you're seeing in next year's budget, between certified and non-certified and between vocational and regular ed.
I guess my question is, is why is it increasing?
Well, the vocational has been going up. Uh, I think some of it is because of the service, uh, the, the conferences and the various programs that have to participate in. But it, it's, the overall increase is not, the net increase is not as bad as the individual pieces and the shifting looks.
Okay, other questions? Tim?
It, it crossed my mind that, uh, a few years back, there was incentive pay in place for teachers not to miss so that we wouldn't be paying subs as much. How did that work and what, what was the history of that, the genesis of it and the?
Yeah, we did that for a year or two, I, I don't know that it, it didn't have.
Didn't seem to work.
Didn't have, uh, real positive impact. I mean, I think it may have slightly, but not for the money we put into it.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Wayne? Well, it sort of irritated the ones who were truly sick too, didn't it? I mean, or was there, I, I just remember some of the teachers didn't respond the way that we wanted them to.
Right.
Don?
Maintenance, uh, the principals list, they still turn those in and comprising the checklist of things that we.
Promanis forget, a lot of accomplish coming out each year.
Do you put a figure to that?
It's called line?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we haven't really, it's not broken out any type of line item. I mean, it's been the main two or three different line items. Depending on where the contract is served or just general lane, that's the issue.
At one time, you had the projects listed for each school and you, as you complete them, you checked them off.
Yes.
Well, I know they appreciate that. And that's, that's something that's, I think, good.
Good. Other questions?
There was some mentioned last night, I held that, about them tapping into that four and a half percent, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Can I stop that pretty quick? But anyway.
Good. Other questions or comments? Do you have a recommendation for us, Mr. Gill?
I do, I'd love it. Recommend that you approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen general purpose school budget of two hundred eighty-one million, eighty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Aaron?
We went to the, uh, or some of us went to the National School Board Association, uh, conference and I sat in a meeting there where a system in Nebraska had thirty-six thousand, five hundred students, seven thousand, seven hundred employees and nearly a five hundred million dollar budget. And they were telling us about how their graduation rate had increased from eighty to eighty-two percent. Sometimes when we go to these conferences, it becomes so apparent just how good we've got it.
Good point.
Yeah, I, I follow up on that, I made that, I made that comment to Dr. Byrne prior to the meeting and, and it's, it's clearly, uh, a great affirmation in many ways to, to attend and, and find out. I found that at the state level, I found that at, at the national level now as well. Doesn't mean that we certainly should, can sit back and not look at everything, that's what we have to do. But, uh, I, I think, again, we need to recognize that.
But, uh, I, I think, again, we need to recognize that more, more times than not, as I said through sessions, I found that we were already there, doing that, moving on. So, uh, that's a, a lot of affirmations came from me as well.
Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Motion's adopted. Thank you, Mr. Gill, Mr. Sandvig, for all the work.
Can I interject something off certain subject?
What? I didn't ask.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Change your mind, don't worry.
And I'll make this quick. Went to Blackman High School, uh, uh, yesterday evening, uh, Mr. Odom and Ms. Barnes were there, uh, several teachers and principals through our system. Uh, former Senator Jamie Woodson, who is heading up SCOR, and, uh, all put together by Representative Womack and, uh, she- uh, former, uh, uh, Director of Schools, uh, had a, a really good discussion, uh, points, counterpoints about this evaluation system. SCOR is doing their due diligence, uh, going across the system, uh, saying, hey, we know what's bad about this evaluation system, tell us some good points. And, and really, the, the teachers and administrators came out with some really good, uh, good points that, that they're taking back with them. So, uh, it, it, it was, uh, very interesting to be involved and, and watch the process and, and, and I think they all appreciated having the opportunity to, uh, say their mind without any fear of, uh, of retribution or, or anything. But it was, it was a good give and take, and enjoyed being there.
Thank you, Wayne. We do have one piece of business before we go. Uh, next week's agenda, and I know some of you probably didn't get your email. Uh, I, I forwarded you the proposed agenda, which is pretty light. And Mr. Gill suggested that maybe we, uh, review whether or not we need to have these meetings. That's not, canceling meetings is not something that we've done before, but doesn't mean we can't do it now.
And the reason I did it, might I clarify?
Please do, yeah.
There's only one thing on the agenda, one item, uh, and, uh-
But there, I mean, there were some consent items on there.
Yeah, there were some, there was a consent agenda and one additional item, and that was it.
Right.
I just thought the heck is up to, to save taxpayers money, and I, I mean, I think we'd be out of here five minutes if we held it, unless we had a bunch of, well, unless we talk about the index. We'd be here all night. But at any rate, that's just my thought on it.
Yeah, no, and I'm, um, that, I'm open to discussing that possibility, or we could skip the work session and have the meeting if there's some, I, I don't know how time-sensitive the, the appeals are. There are a couple of student discipline appeals on there, I think that's the item that you're talking about, right? Mr. Gill?
What about the assistant coaches, uh, I mean, the volunteer coaches? So they're not, they wouldn't be allowed to participate until we met?
Was there time restraint on that, Paul?
One of them is for spring football for this season, the other two are for twelve, thirteen school year.
Let's just dispense with the work session and just have a regular meeting and-
I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Take your business and go on.
Yeah, I think it'd make more sense.
Yeah, that, I mean, I, I, I hope the board doesn't go away from having work sessions on a regular basis, but when there's not much on the agenda, but still business that needs to be done, I think that probably makes sense. Now, if we want to be nice to Mr. Tackett, who's got a conflict on the Thursday, I think we could just move the board meeting from Thursday to Tuesday.
I appreciate it. I won't be here Thursday if it's a cancel.
Is that agreeable to everybody? I mean, you should have Tuesday on your calendar already.
It works.
Well, then let's make that change. And then, Mr. Gill, I've had two board members ask me about, uh, a preliminary report from you on the, the rezoning for Stewart's Creek, and we talked about that a month or so ago, and you said at some point, while this current board was still in existence, you might bring that forward.
Well, we've actually, we're working on it, I mean, there's some preliminary stuff done. Matter of fact, I, if, if I recall correctly, I think I gave you guys a, a handout that specified the dates for those, and I think they were in July, weren't they, where we'd have the preliminary?
I've forgotten, I don't, I don't remember what that said.
I think they gave you July and August, uh, for those that are leaving, uh, to study. I can pull that back out and break-
I'll reschedule tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think, I, I thought everybody was in favor of it at the time.
I think we just forgot that you, we'd already sort of set the schedule on that. But if you'll remind us of that tomorrow. So tomorrow's our meeting on the building program, and then for next week, we'll just have one meeting next week. Oh, no, is that next week or two weeks from now? Next week.
Next week.
So, oh, that's right. So next week, Tuesday will be our official board meeting at five o'clock. Wednesday will be our retirement. And then we're gonna take Thursday off, aren't we? No?
If you'd like to.
Oh, okay, well, the board will take it off. Aaron?
Could we get the student discipline packet then tomorrow evening? We don't want those out a long time, but we wouldn't have an opportunity to review that.
Oh, that's a good point.
With just one.
Yeah, we'll have it tomorrow evening.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Aaron. Everybody clear on the program? Are you excited about our record-setting eleventh meeting in one month tomorrow night? Well, it's, it's an unusual month, uh, I, I don't think we'll be replicating that. Set them out for, with that, we're adjourned.